In the spirit of punctuality, I am pleased to welcome all present here at the outset and beginning of the regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be declared a call to order at 6:00 PM on the thirtieth of November, two thousand seventeen. With that, we will engage in another roll call. The council, they care to defer with the pledge of allegiance since we did that at the start of the workshop.
Yes.
Okay, here's yes down here, no?
I'm open, anyway, I'm good.
Tiebreaker.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
All right, we got it. That's disaffirmative. All right, now let's proceed with the roll call.
Andy Wilson.
President.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Yes.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Also here. So with that, we do have a full forum, so now we will invite all these rise for our pledge of allegiance and Mr. Parsons will do this, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll proceed with our agenda, first with the mayor's report. I'd like to reiterate for the awareness of the council and the public that we just recently learned that Diane Floyd, our deputy clerk, has been hired in a new position of responsibility and effective January first, is going to be leaving employment with the City of Vator. It will be our loss if she's not standing as clerk and she'll be sorely missed. I would like to note that if you haven't heard, that we did successfully locate the sewer line at the school property. It's nothing short of a miracle. We can thank Tim Spain for that and his memory and his father as well. So that is a major breakthrough and we're having additional children sign up actually, that new family move into the community that will have one, possibly two children, so we're well over the minimum number needed to begin. So that's real positive. And so that's all I have in the mayor's report at the moment. Now let's proceed with council reports.
Well, just so you know, we do have our giving tree of the Little Crane Cafe and we are taking donations for our food baskets for Christmas time and so you are compelled to give the season. Come down to the Little Crane and pick up a child's name and bring back a present.
A gift or food?
Yeah, a gift or we are taking donations for the food baskets. Usually that's a cash donation because we have certain things that we put in baskets, so yeah.
Thank you for that. Excellent. Okay, any other council comments?
I'm a grandpa again.
Congratulations.
He's glad to have a grandpa.
Yes, he's a grandpa again.
Girl or boy?
Girl.
Girl.
Everybody healthy?
Everybody's healthy.
Congratulations.
That's number three.
Fantastic, congratulations. Number twelve, Vader. My position is rising.
As most of you know out there, spreading around here in the area, things that can't be kept secret, but that we, the city and the council and all the mayor and the mayor and all the citizens are from ACLU, we've got in this code enforcement thing we have and it's a legal thing that we're going to be taking up to our executive session. So there is where we are with this legal decision. Basically, it's a lawsuit against the city.
Well, no, not really. The ACLU has just written a letter containing its observations about the city's code enforcement efforts.
More than that.
Yeah, they're not claiming any action against the city, they're just sent a letter of support to those who are fighting the city. That's not a letter that should be taken necessarily as a potential lawsuit. Anyway, I want to clarify, it's a matter of public record. Okay, any other comments?
How should it be taken, the letter? What would you say?
Well, it is a letter that simply articulates a perspective on the city's efforts to enforce the code enforcement ordinance that was being passed. They're not claiming that there's anything illegal, they're just providing a perspective on it. So hopefully you've read the response from our city attorney.
They haven't received that.
Okay, then it'll probably be provided in the executive session tonight. We do have a comment from the public. Do you want to start with comments from the public?
Ready?
Okay, see who's quicker.
About this letter, is this just kind of an information letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It is not a letter that's wanted.
It's not a thumb journey thing, it's just information.
It was their viewpoint on three different items. Item one, they are happy with the fact that we're going to start offering an additional letter at the beginning, so they're already happy with one of our changes that were done. The second one is they thought that fifteen days wasn't long enough to get people to respond, so that's not a big deal. And then the third one was the $500 per day fine, they thought that was excessive and we're already talking about that in our meetings as well. So we're already covering all the points that they had pointed out that they considered might be excessive, so if anything, it was not as bad as it seemed.
The council isn't the same thing, because that's what you call a malfeasance of office.
No. They just highlighted the same thing that our citizenry has highlighted to us and it sounds like we're already fairly in agreeance with our citizens, so it's fairly non-issue at this point.
I never did believe it. I always said no.
There'll be opportunities to share that.
But you voted on it.
Yeah. Votes in favor, move on. This is an opportunity for council, our by reports. So let's move on now with our agenda approval, the city council meeting agenda for tonight.
I make motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for eleven thirty two thousand seventeen.
Okay, Mr. Daly has submitted a motion, as you noted, to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Schei. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And it's approval for our previous city council meeting and our public hearing on November ninth.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes and the public hearing minutes for November ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, Mr. Schei submitted a motion to approve the minutes as written, as noted. Have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Voucher approvals, no, some changes, so take that under advisement.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers, first of November, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. The end of November, two thousand seventeen, fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents, for a November, two thousand seventeen, total of thirty-four thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay, Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those voucher totals as noted. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Special reports. It's our opportunity at this time, as you'll note on the agenda, to hear from Mr. Jeff Hemmings, who's present with us, who's got some comments he'd like to share with the council regarding the solid waste service contract that he's had for a number of years with the City of Vator. So, Mr. Hemmings, you feel free to take the microphone.
Yeah, the present contract is expiring at the end of this year, getting close to the deadline already and I'm of the mind to renew and stick with things for another extended period, hopefully like five years. The only changes I would make would be with fuel going up, maybe enough to add like fifty dollars a month to my revenue. I think I haven't calculated, probably ten or twenty cents per account. And then I'd like to also tie it to the consumer price indexing, which fluctuates based on inflationary concerns primarily. And the guy down in Kelso said that he always goes for eighty percent of whatever the change is, if it goes up, you know, ten, you go eight, whatever, you know, a percentage wise, which sounds good, you know, safe enough to me, and if it goes down, you go down too. Then I would also like to make it so that it's transferable, the contract, in case I can get my son to take enough interest to personally over, you know, assume it from me. And everything else would be relatively the same as far as I can foresee. And I don't have anything written up at this point, but we do have in the next month. Doesn't sound too challenging. But I wanted to put that before you guys, see if you have any plans or suggestions or ideas, I'm open to whatever.
One thing, I have a question. You mentioned that you are garbage and recycling, but yet you don't offer us any kind of recycling ability.
Yeah, there's. Oh, you didn't get the flyer.
I didn't get the flyer.
I knew in town, there is an individual option for five dollars more to have first and third pick up of any volume of recyclables.
Two cans, I thought.
Well, there's one that puts out two cans beside you.
Yeah.
And, yeah, if you wanted more, it's, there's no limit.
Oh, okay.
It's just that others like to do their own extensive and.
I know this is kind of an awkward situation where you're explaining your contract proposal and changes and suggestions, generally speaking, you'd approach the mayor and we'd sit down, but you're just informing the council.
Right.
But what we don't want to engage in is a.
Negotiations with the customers?
City Council.
It's entertaining.
Well, yeah.
It would be.
Well, you know, I don't really advertise the recycling, I've only got ten customers, I think, that wanted to sign up, you know, as an option made available from the last contract. And it's a lose-lose for me, I don't mind doing it for the customer, it takes up extra time and expense, I gotta unload my truck at the dump, but I'm willing to do that still.
Would the council like to simply authorize the mayor to engage in a conversation and then bring a proposed contract for your finer scrutiny before the end of December?
Yes.
Okay, include the conversation about recycling.
Sure, yeah, I like that five dollars, that's grand, that you know we had something like that, so.
Yeah, okay. Then I detect a consensus here with council.
Yes.
So why don't we go ahead and proceed to that end?
Before the next council meeting or the December?
Before the end of December, yeah. Ideally before the fourteenth.
Yeah, see if we can't get it, you know, see if we can't get it ready, we'll try.
All right.
Doesn't give us much time, we'll try.
I will be hearing from you then.
Sounds good, you betcha.
Thanks.
Do you have a question, you want to entertain a question?
Yeah.
I have a question about your contract. Is it a personal contract between you and the city, or is it a contract between community waste and recycling and the city?
I'm representing the business as owner, it's probably both.
It's community waste and recycling with him as the owner.
Yeah, but he's talked about, oh, this is going to be a personal, whether he sells the business or allows his son to take over, but is it still going to be community waste and recycling, or is it going to be something else?
Yeah, that may be a question.
Well, the contract would be fulfilled by any transferred ownership, that's not really an issue until this contract's over, but.
Might be a good question to ask when we bring the official contract, yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Jim, for Jim. With that, we'll now turn our attention to public comment portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have six people signed up.
Six people?
Yes. First is Carl Crabbe.
This is the first time you've presented a public comment, you have three minutes and there's no questions asked of anybody but the mayor.
I was asked to come and speak about Walkinock and things that the Lions, Vader Lions Club does.
Okay.
I'm the president of Vader Lions Club this year.
What was your name?
Carl Crabbe, C-R-A-B-B. And one of the things that we do is we also are Vader Lions Club partner for the Little Crane on the food baskets that we give out at Christmas time and that will be, Jason, that'll be the twenty-second, I just confirmed that with Anita, Friday the twenty-second at nine AM. And, but I would like to have Karen come and talk to you about Walkinock, she is the chairman of our Walkinock and.
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Crabbe and Walkinock will be this Saturday, starting at ten, at nine-thirty we'll be gathering at the park under into the covering area and there'll be somebody there all morning and we'll have drivers going out all from Ryderwood all through Vader and.
In Chenan Valley?
In Chenan Valley, I can never remember that one. And each vehicle will have a yellow card in it on the dash, so people will know, the people that are going to the doors or will be wearing badges too, so everybody will know who they are. And we'll take everything to Winlock to their food bank.
Fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
If a bird in Tom Crier has put it in bags for the Walkinock, if you fill that bag and set it out front or on your porch, they'll swing by and pick them up.
Okay.
Or you can bring them over to the, by the tail over there to the covered area, where we'll have somebody there to receive.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We've participated in that in the past, I know we've contributed quite a bit from the City of Vator, that's good. All right, who's next?
Okay, that takes care of the first two. Third is Ken Reller.
We live in Vader, nine oh six, Tenth Street, we're trying to buy the property behind ours and the final hurdle we have is a voluntary correction agreement from the City of Vader to us, which basically is trying to fine us five hundred dollars a day to correct things that we're not in control of yet. I would like, this is something we see out our kitchen window every morning when we have our coffee and our breakfast and we're going to correct these things. It's a, I think a double wedge has been probably abandoned for twenty years and a travel trailer or two and we want to get rid of it, we see it every morning.
Close the city.
But to have us sign this to where we're subjugating ourselves to a five hundred dollar a day fine is a bit much and we're going to walk away from this deal now. And I think we're really the only hope to solve this problem is us to buy this property because we want to clean it up because we see it every day. But we're not signing this. We would like this waived and we would like a letter to that effect to our escrow company because that's the last hurdle we have to close the deal.
Have you contacted City Hall and provided this?
I'm here now. That's where we got this letter, it's from City Hall.
I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, tomorrow morning, would that work for you?
I have, tomorrow morning will work, but this is where we got the letter, it's from City Hall.
Right, and when I gave you guys the letter, I said, read it and come back and talk to me if you have any questions. I haven't heard anything except, well, I don't want to get into the details, but I think there's a misunderstanding with what it's saying and I think if we talk about it that it will help with the understanding.
Yeah, so what time tomorrow, eleven?
That will work for me, yeah.
Perfect, okay, good. I'm sure we can walk our way through this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Jason Rayfield.
All right, as most of you know, I have a property on the edge of town, well, on the edge of town, the home edge, B Street. The Get It Done Group, I love you guys, awesome, thank you, you guys did amazing, actually went beyond, that was cool, I just got to remove the stuff now, that was amazing, awesome, thank you. I did get a chance to read the ACLU letter and where it said, I know the city and I are having a huge, one thing, only one thing, mind you, only one, it's the same thing, it's a five hundred dollar a day fine, we're going over other details, but on the ACLU, it also says that they request that the council make the change retroactive, vacating prior notices of violations sent out without preceding warning letters. So, I mean, I have an attorney involved in this, but I mean, if honestly we can just, you guys can get a hold of your attorney, tell my attorney to just quash us all, I'm more than happy to just call it done. So, I mean, if you guys can just get a hold of your attorney and be like, hey, let's write this off, I can get a hold, you know, my attorney will tell me, we can just call it done. So, but, I mean, because that's one of the things, I understand this is not like a final letter, ACLU, it's not a final letter, it's just a, it's kind of like the state's like saying, hey, you know, take a break, look at what you guys are doing, you know. So, anyway, yeah, that's about all I got.
I would let the council know that I did, that I talked to Mr. Rayfield.
Yes.
We said a time when we would talk about that issue, but you decided not to, so.
I decided to have council.
I would be more than happy to meet with you to address that, just the council meeting. So, would you say we plan on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I asked for council to be there and canceled, so that's why I got my attorney.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to meet with you, so let's plan on that. Next.
Judy Costello.
Maybe you can get a little bit of a statement there. All right. Maybe more than a little.
All right.
Quorum. As long as you have quorum.
Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street, Vader. My comment tonight is, all of us in this room, come up here and stand up, we tell you folks what our concerns are, what our problems are, ask for advice, et cetera, and we then turn around and sit down and we sometimes never hear, it's like it goes into a black void. Some other council cities and their council, a couple of the council people will say, I would like to get back to Judy on that question, and maybe two of them would research whatever my comment, my problem, or whatever it might be, and then in a couple of weeks, they would have an answer for me. And it seems to work really well for a couple other communities local to us and I was wondering if possibly we might want to consider in the future, and I'm not saying every little thing that comes up here, but there are things that do come up here to the podium that are things that really do need answers and these folks leave, they literally just leave City Hall and walk away going, what was that about? And so I kind of would just like to think about it. As a future council person, I would like to be able to say, you know, maybe I answered Doug's question or Linda's question or Donna's or something like that and maybe Joe helped me research a fence line or something. So it's just a thought to you and now I'm going to sit down and you're not going to answer me and so, but this is it because we're not supposed to have interaction. So it's just kind of like an example of what's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next.
Dr. Marco McHyver?
Yes.
Judy? Another one that fell off of that black void.
I'm Dr. McHyver, probably don't need this, the application, I talk for a living. I just wanted to comment, Ken Reller's my husband, we're the ones trying to purchase the abandoned property on G Street and we love this community, love Vader and love our neighbors, the quiet little community, but the letter I got from the city that Franklin Mary has your name on it was so incendiary that I am beyond enraged to the point that I just want to leave this community and take my wonderful neighbors with me and no longer want to be a part of it. So I really need some resolve here because I am just, I have not been this angry in, I don't think, ever. So the language in this voluntary contract that is not voluntary, it would be coerced if we want to go through and actually make this community better and without ever giving us a chance to bring things up to code, we're already assuming that we're the violators and I found the language reprehensible and frankly, you guys should be ashamed.
Okay.
That's it.
Tomorrow at eleven? Tomorrow at eleven?
Eleven.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there another?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, then we will now proceed with our city business. Is there any other council comments you'd like to make?
I will, in regards to Judy's, I've been thinking about a workshop, or not a workshop because that's what we just did, right? But a town hall meeting, because the city council meetings are just that, they're for this, you guys give our opinions. You guys give our opinions, and we have to keep our mouths shut and just go listen and take it. And it's...so what I'd like to do is see a town hall meeting. And not the whole city council has to be there. But I think it'd be cool to do one a... I don't know, one a quarter or something like that, that we can sit down and actually hold conversations back and forth and answer questions. Because I feel that, but, you know, because when I leave here, I'm just as frustrated as the people that are standing up there. So, it's something that I just thought I'd bring up. And if you guys want to think about a timeframe, or if you guys would be interested in doing that with me, or if I just do it once a month, or not once a month, I can't say that. But once every couple of months or something like that. I don't know. But just to finish, it's not going into black holes. There's...it is not going into a black hole. You...you guys...I don't think a lot of people realize how much we think...at least for me. I'll talk for myself because I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. But I think about this stuff all the time, and it drives me crazy trying to figure out how to keep everybody happy and do this and do that. And I'm, you know, I'm the business owner, and I'm usually the boss, so it's usually very easy for me to get very boisterous and this is the way it's going to be. But this is totally different. So, it's not going into black holes. We care, or I care. I'm sure that they care also. And that's it. Shut up now.
Very spontaneous comment. I would respond with equal frustration because I would contest that this observation, that the other city councils meet and during the public comment, that they respond to the public comment. I would defy evidence to that effect. It's the opportunity for public to make statements, but the Association of Washington City's handbook put it states that it's not the opportunity to engage in the cross-examination of issues. It's the city councils meeting. You don't even have to have a public comment in the city council meeting in the state of Washington. One-third of all cities don't. But so, to perceive that it's going into a black hole, I have to agree with our city council member. That's why things are placed on the agenda to discuss the very topics that emerge. But that's just a comment. Do we want to hear observations?
I just wanted to state that Lois Wilson, when she was a councilwoman, came into this chamber, I think, once a week at a specific time, and anybody in the community could come in and talk, like Mike was suggesting, if they had things they wanted to finish the discussion with. But I have had remarks made to me that, "Now, what was that all about? I went, I talked, and now where's that going?" And they never hear about it again. And so, that was my reason for getting up tonight was in hopes that I can make aware of the fact that they don't feel like they're being heard at all because it sometimes never goes away. And not being disrespectful, Mayor, but they don't want to come talk to you. They want to hear the council and what the council was...what Jason has to think about it early on, or, you know, Joe or Mike or some of them, you know. And no disrespect to you at all, but they just kind of want to hear what these guys are thinking also on different topics.
If I had my druthers...
You'd like them.
Exactly, because I don't necessarily want to talk to them either. Unfortunately, the Association of Washington Handbook Code Cities, which we are, requires the mayors to carry out the ordinances that the council approves. So, right. It's what I get to do as a mayor. So, but I love this city, and I've lived here for 12 years. And for 10 years have served as a mayor, trying to do everything I possibly could to help improve this community. And so, if that's an overstatement, then that's my bad.
I want to ask a question about the black hole. Last week, or last meeting...
The video camera is on its way.
Uh-huh. That's what I wanted to do. I just wanted to record it.
See, it's not more than a Bible. He wasn't even here last week.
No. See, I found out about that.
He wasn't even here at the last meeting, and he's already following up on it when you brought that up.
Very good. Yeah, no, it's easy to make negative comments. It used to be negative, but it's hard to actually do. And there are people who are doing, and this community has improved. And it's got a lot of room for improvement still. He's a conscientious man at the council, and I know that. And your voices need to be heard. So, with that, then let's proceed. Item number one on our city council agenda is Consider Resolution 18-2017, the add velorem tax rate for 2018. Has to be decided tonight, so at the end of our vote.
Say we don't raise our property tax rate this year. The county's doing enough.
I see three out of five. So, that's a fairly simple insertion. Will it submit a motion to that effect?
Can I give you guys verbiage for that?
I don't think so. This...the resolution paper doesn't have verbiage. Make something out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find...oh, here it is. Yeah, so for...to pass the resolution, you would just need to state the resolution number, what it's about, and the amount that you want to change. And if the amount is zero, then the change is zero, 0% increase over last year.
We'll make a motion on Resolution Number 18-2017, a resolution of the city of Vader, Washington, setting the property tax levy rate for the calendar year 2018 in accordance with RCW 84.55.120, setting our increase at 0%.
Heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shai to approve of Resolution Number 18-2017, which would increase the levy amount to 0% or make no change in our current property tax. So, do we have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any other commentary this moment in time? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We had one in opposition, so...
Is he understanding?
It's on the increase for the property taxes. You want an increase?
No.
No.
Just wanted to say no.
Just make sure that we get his vote correct because if he could state that, yes, he agrees to zero increase.
You do agree to zero increase. You do agree to zero increase for 2018.
Okay, so...
So, the voting is unanimous. All right. Item number two, council, to consider ordinance 06-2017, the interfund loan.
I just have one question. I realize you've paid the work here since the beginning of the year. The city will pay it back. I just want to confirm that it won't be the citizens that pay this money back? It will actually...well, it kind of will in some way, but it won't increase our bill to pay that back? I mean, I'm increasing our monthly bill to pay this $10,000 back?
No.
Because this is going from...from the sewer...
It will be paid back. It will be paid back with money in the current fund. It'll be paying the sewer system back for this loan. It is anticipated that we will win the lawsuit regarding this, and that we will get the fines. And the fines will cover all our costs.
An extra charge on my sewer bill, say?
Nope. It won't affect your sewer bill at all. It will not affect your sewer bill at all. Nope.
2% interest.
It'll be 2% over what the LGIP rate is.
Just wanted to hear it from him.
Likely discussing this in greater detail in the exact session. Maybe?
Not this item.
Could come up in the conversation.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-06, authorizing the interfund loan from the sewer capital reserve in the amount of $10,000.
Heard the motions submitted by Mr. Daly to approve ordinance 06-2017. It was read and noted. We have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other commentary? Time to vote. Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item number three, the council to discuss overweight vehicle ordinance. This is up to the fourth or fifth city council meeting. This has been up for council consideration.
At the last council meeting, I said I would follow up with some other cities on what they do for overweight vehicle ordinances, which I did. Toledo has none. Winlock has none. Napa Mine has been down this road before with trying to enforce weight limits for roads. And they found it hard to defend that legally as their police officers aren't trained to weigh vehicles. So, how can they tell whether a vehicle is overweight or not? And so, I talked with their public works employee, Brian, who is very, very versed in it. He's very passionate about it. I think I hit a note with him. They've instead gone to no commercial vehicle signs on the roads that they wanted to keep commercial vehicles out. And they define commercial vehicle as anything with two axles, tandem axle. So, it allows your FedExes, your... Your run-of-the-mill school buses, things like that on there. But it keeps out the log trucks and all of that. And I asked him about, "What about dump trucks for personal residents?" And he said, "Well, they're police officers. Probably just don't catch the one-time, and they're okay with that." So, that's not really a nice way of saying it, but that's kind of the way it works. So, that's what they did. So, they put individual signs that cost $25 apiece on the roads that say no commercial vehicles, and they have a small ordinance that defines what a commercial vehicle is. So, that's what matters in Napa Mine.
Kind of along those same lines, I checked...talked to the attorney about some of the things that were brought the last time we discussed the ordinance. And that one of the things that she said is that this type of ordinance, the city has the authority to choose when to enforce it and when not to. Just because people are coming in with the vehicles does not mean that the city is required to fine them if they're overweight. So, the city can choose what scenarios they want to enforce and what ones they don't. She says, "As long as the city is not picking and choosing based on the things like race, creed, religion, things like that." If the city is choosing to only enforce their ordinance for large logging trucks that are going to be making numerous... Numerous repeated trips that are going to be damaging to the roads. She says, "The city, by all means, can choose to enforce it on them, but not enforce it on one-time offenders." And so, she said, "The city absolutely has the right to do that." That we are not required to enforce it anyway." So, it kind of goes along how you're saying, like, where the police department, they don't worry about...
It sounded fishy, but apparently it's okay.
Apparently, there's a legality to that, and that the city is not required to...is not required to. Well, when you think about it, because the one-time...the one-time dump truck isn't going to do the kind of damage that the logging trucks over three weeks, you know, doing, you know, 12 trips a day, they do damage. And if you look at our records, you'll see that the logging company that did have to pay the permit fee and everything, that they were required to fix and repair all the things that were damaged. And we have record fire engineers of what was damaged, and then they had to go back and fix it and make sure those repairs were done. And so, you can see where they have affected the roads based on their activities. So, why that's allowed, I don't know. But apparently, the city is allowed to pick and choose when it comes to that kind of ordinance, so...
I don't like having to pick and choose.
I don't either.
I don't like it.
You know, I think it's kind of...if no other city around us has one, and we only put it in place because of the one instance where we had log trucks that were going through town. And now, we're five meetings into discussion about this thing that we can't figure out. We can't figure out any kind of right wording for it. So, the only right wording is, "Well, we'll put it in place, but we'll just turn our backs on everything until we choose when we want to enforce it." And that don't make any sense to me. So, if we can't figure something out, we might as well just take it off the books because it's just adding confusion, contempt, and, you know, towards the city and us because we're just unable to get this thing solved. But it sounds to me like it's not solvable in our situation. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know if not having it at all because I don't think that anybody wants a logging... And that's the only thing that really clicks into my head was having the logging trucks going through and through and through. And that, to me, would tear up roads.
Sure.
And it did. But if...if it's a resident that's doing home improvement stuff, that's just...to me, that's just ridiculous to...
We had one...we've had one instance in the last several years that we've had that.
Two.
That cornered down and that cornered down. That we've had, you know, instances where there's several trucks like that going to be on surface streets. I don't know if we had an ordinance on the first one.
We should have some ordinance because, I mean, we've had two. I mean, who's...I mean, just the amount of time before we have another instances. I mean, we need a way to recoup the cost to fix these roads after the companies come through.
Little history. Several years ago, the state highway wanted to take 506 out here, and we would have had 7th Street. Yet, we would have still had the log trucks and heavy trucks going through the city. Rex Hancock was a friend of mine on the city council. We went up and spent three different years up at this courthouse at meeting. And finally, we knew a few of the politicians up there. And then they asked me to get up at the hearing and measure. And I said, "Well," I said, "fine." I said, "We could put a gate up at the north and west end of the east end side and collect toll." up at the north, at the west end of the east end side and collect toll taxes. Well, they laughed about it. But when they all went back in the executive session to vote, it came back and the city still today owns Seventh Street, which is our street, but it belongs to highways five oh six, the state highway department today. Otherwise, would, how would the city have ever been able to pay for all of those log trucks and heavy trucks that go through here? There's an awful lot of counties and we.
Well, we're not talking about five oh six. That's a state, that's a state highway, so we're, this ordinance.
Yes, it is a state highway, but I'm talking about the state was going to take and take it away and give it to the county. And then the county was gonna give us what the five oh six is and we would have been responsible for maintaining all of Seventh Street. I mean, it was fortunate that we was able to survive and keep it the way it is today. I'll tell you, believe it or not, they were really working on us. I can't remember what year it was.
Okay, well, hopefully there's some consensus emerging from this so that insight.
Is there any way to make it, so one, it's not on the residents? And, because the only thing that comes to my head right now, and I'm tired, but, is the logging trucks. And if we have a big logging thing going on and they're coming in, if we get a pick and choose, let's choose logging offs, obviously off five oh six, because we don't, we don't care about five oh six, but that, to me, is the only one that, and I don't know.
How about ten loads or more?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think if we put a number on it like that, rather than quantify or, or pinpointing a certain activity, then it's like, well, you're discriminating against this type of activity versus this type of activity. But I think if we put a number on it like that, it says, you know, this many loads over this many days or something like that, and then once it triggers that, then the ordinance kicks in.
We could just add that, add that clarification into our current ordinance.
Yeah.
And get rid of the, that every street has to have a sign on it.
Yeah. And that could encompass logging truck deliveries or pickups, someone opened a gravel pit and had all the dump trucks coming through town, they could encompass that, yeah.
We do have a comment from the member of the public, but first you.
One, one other thing too is when they start building a new bridge down here, we won't be able to go down through the highway. And that's where all the trucks and other vehicles or whatever, heavy, heavy trucks and stuff are gonna go down West Side Highway near there and right down to the city again, more so.
We'll worry, we'll worry about that when we get to twenty nineteen. One thing at a time.
There may be alternative, but. Okay, the council want to hear the gentleman in the back?
Yeah, I've been with heavy equipment and both lowboys, log trucks, and I own my own trucks. Most of the cities have the ruling where there are weight limits, but if you have to deliver on that street and it's the only way into it, they can't do much to you. Most doesn't say go ahead. But whereas steady hauling or somebody owns a truck and brings it home loaded and goes down the street, then you can do something.
It sounds like that amendment would accommodate such a potential problem.
So maybe that's what we can do is just amend the one that's there and take off, just make it for.
Repeated.
Repeat of.
Repeated commercial traffic.
Would the council like us to draft something for your future consideration?
Yeah, I think that, I think that would really do it.
All right. Item two, please send for affirmative.
Yes.
Got it? Then we will so act.
Pretty good.
I was just thinking, if you, if you made it specific to log trucks, what if something happened around here and we had big gravel trucks coming? I wonder if you could change the wording to commercial vehicle over a certain weight limit, maybe at so many trips?
Well, that's what, that's what we just talked about.
Taking it to, if it's so many number of trips over so many days, then it triggers the ordinance, but if it's just one, then it wouldn't trigger the ordinance?
Right, I mean, yeah.
Like Joe just mentioned, if, if somebody discovered a gravel pit or started it here and test.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
So I think we've covered that.
And then instead of a weight, because, and like I said, Naperville had, said they, they didn't have anyone trained to, to, to test whether the vehicle really was overweight, define the commercial vehicle as something with tandem axles. Because then our police force could easily, easily spot it.
The weight is, the weight is determined, is provided, that information is provided by the permuty person getting the permit. So our, our law enforcement would have to be chasing anybody down.
Okay, as long as legally defensible.
You have a scale, right?
We do have trained officers that are the law enforcement that.
Okay, maybe we're lucky, we're lucky enough to have a police force that's trained in it then.
Yes.
You're on the hook then.
All right, then it sounds like we have a direction. Thank you. So with that, let's go to item number four. Cancelled the consider, considered update on the second limb disposal bid that was received. And Jill, you want to brief the council, but maybe those who haven't heard?
Okay, Mr. Rayfield contacted, is it Tom Bowers? Was it Tim Bowers?
Tim Bowers.
Tim Bowers, who is, does logging and he came out and looked at our limb pile and our excavator and he offered to give us a thousand dollars if he hauled off all the limbs and took the excavator. So the first quote, the first bid was if we give them an excavator, they'd haul it all off. If we paid a thousand, and then this next guy says that he would haul it all off and take the excavator and give us a thousand. However, the other aspect of that is that, I believe Mr. Rayfield, maybe he can speak more to this, because I don't know that I have the right numbers, looked at the excavator, maybe he could give us an update if council's okay with that on what his opinion is on fixing it.
All right, so I looked at the excavator, looked at the parts, twenty-four hundred dollars for a brand-new head. And I bet, told Jason, I'd be willing to put it on, do all the work for free, you know, it's my town, we need to use equipment. Another thing Tim Bowers did say is he would remove that for four thousand dollars without the excavator, he would remove that whole pile for four thousand dollars. So that's without giving up the excavator. So doing the work on the excavator is not hard at all. The, the head is literally right there, everything is right there, it's just, just getting the part. And the thing is, the reason the head's so expensive is it has to be ordered in, because nobody around here's got one. It was repaired before and that's where it cracked at. Also, the person who put it together used existing bolts for the head, so, and they're stretch bolts, so it won't torque down to spec. And that's what happened is, it ended up.
That's why it leaked.
That's why it leaked and it took out the repair for the head, yes, the head. So, but I said, if you guys get the heads, I'd be happy to put it on, it won't take that long, and you guys have a ten thousand dollar piece of machinery.
For ditches.
For ditches, for, I mean, it honestly, it falls underneath.
So many purposes.
Yeah, so many purposes.
Exactly, when the city gets the water system back, you almost have to have that sort of piece of equipment.
And finding a rubber track excavator for less than eight thousand that doesn't run and operate is hard to find. So you have, and it's not, it's, might be a mini excavator, but that is a stout excavator. I mean, you look at all the other ones, you know, they don't have that long of a boom. That one, that one's well, well-made, so.
That's very good to know.
Yeah.
So can I add to that as well? And I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this yet, mayor, so this is really news to you. But, so John, our public works employee, brought me an ad today for someone who's selling a chipper that goes on the back of the tractor as a P T O drive, I think is that the right term, P T O drive, on the back of it, for around two thousand dollars. And so, I mean, I'm just doing the math in my head, twenty-four hundred there, two thousand here, there's our four thousand, forty-four hundred that he want, that the gentleman would charge us. But with the excavator running and with our own chipper, we could work our way through that pile.
Yeah, we could.
So, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Have you seen that pile?
Yes, but John, John was telling me the other day, he goes, if I had that chipper, I could get through that pile, you know?
He's a vicious man.
You know, it'd take a while, but, you know, but then that would also allow him to, to be able to maintain the pile.
Jason has another comment?
When it comes, I just want to make sure, when it comes to getting machinery, make sure it's, some of it's gonna say made in China to American specs. And chippers, I hope, I mean, if he came to you, it probably is American, but I'm not saying this because it's another country, I'm just saying they don't have everybody watching over them, you know, to make sure it's actually made to American specs. Like today, we got a, a press at the shop and it was made in China to American specs, the welds are, like, half of them were gone, half was not even touching corners on like, yeah, and that came from O'Reilly's in a box that was shipped from, and one of our customers, Gary Corman, he got a chipper and it said American standards on it, everything. On the bottom, it said made in China, he didn't know that. He used a chipper, like, three weeks into it, it actually punctured a hole on the side on the way out and it actually bound up the, that one because of the cheap metal.
Chinese steel.
Yes, Chinese steel. Yeah, so just, you know, just putting that out there. Qualities, you know.
If you want to check that out, it sounds like. Okay, well, I could tell the council, you're probably already aware, that we've had at least two or three people who all claimed that they could fix that excavator. And so some good men have tried and all have failed. So Jason, if you can pull that off.
I can do it. See, the thing is, something created that also in the central cracked head. So, and they probably just put the head on there thinking it cracked. Well, it's either a water pump, there's that plug radiator, something in the cooling system is a problem. So I can clean that all out. Chainsaw, I'm gonna do a lot. So I can clean all that out and get the, the flow going like it's supposed to, so it doesn't get overheated.
The city paid fifteen thousand dollars for that excavator, but a year and a half before, I was on the city council to start, or became mayor. And so it's just, it's proved to be invaluable at times, we needed it. I would love to have a functioning excavator, a part of the city's inventory, just so you know.
Can I make a comment on the piles and everything?
Yeah.
Judy and I actually took a walk down there, stepped over the gate and walked down and, and looked around and, in the future, we came up with what we thought might be a great plan to put those cement dividers for sections, one for limbs, one for grass, one for leaves, divide it all up and maybe only have it open, only have it unlocked maybe one or two days a month and then have a volunteer, and my husband and I can volunteer, but, you know, we can get volunteers to go in there to make sure that's better residents, better dumping there, and maybe even charge five dollars per dump, which is really a good price, you know, and make sure that the stuff gets dumped in the correct spot, that it doesn't over, ever get over.
No garbage.
Overflowed again, no garbage, nothing that doesn't belong to, you know, and then we'll be accumulating a little bit of money to maybe invest in equipment that's needed or whatever. So I think that might be something we might, I thought it was a great idea. Judy thought it was a great idea, it was Judy's idea. We thought it was a great idea.
We thought it was a great idea.
So it might be something to keep in mind to do that, just have a scheduled date, somebody there to watch, specific hours, make sure things get dumped correctly and then we can keep on, keep it under control.
It's a valuable service to a community like ours that is subject to the Washington Clean Air Agency, which prohibits any limb burning. County can do it, but little cities like ours can't, and so we are really stuck. So that is brilliant idea.
We've had a fortune of calling our benches and stuff, I'd really miss it.
Too. Okay, well, it sounds like we have a direction. Would the council care that prefers to pursue the options that have been mentioned by Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, then if you don't mind, we'll talk.
Yes.
Okay. You'd kill two birds with one stone.
There we go.
Okay, one last one.
I was just wondering if anybody, if you checked with the state for surplus chippers? Not yet. That might be an idea, maybe buy one that's reasonable.
We have looked at costs at various sources, but they're, they're a pretty pricey commodity. But.
Could even rent one. I've been wanting a tractor for so long and now I've got a tractor and it doesn't run and now I go and rent a tractor and it runs and I just use it to work and then I.
It breaks down, it goes back.
Exactly.
Okay, well, all right, then we'll explore that and we'll get back to you on going topic. All right, item number five, update on our storm drain projects. Had five thousand dollars of grant money and we've essentially expended it.
Yeah, fifty-five hundred, yeah. So what we've done is we purchased, as council approved, we purchased the jet, the pressure washer and the hose and the attachments. We have the hose and the attachments, the pressure washer's still on its way. We have got the T, got some of the TV work done along Seventh Street. However, they didn't have all the right equipment to do the second section, so we've done from, basically, they went into the manhole on Main Street, they went up towards the shop about that far, and then they also TV'd going the other direction down to the railroad tracks, so we have that. And they marked everything.
And they gots to the railroad tracks?
Almost, then there's a blockage right in front of the railroad tracks. So then the next step was to go down to the alcohol pipe at the creek and then go up the pipe and see if we could meet the other side. However, there's a ninety-degree turn in the pipe. It goes under the rail, it starts on the far side, goes up the highway, then a ninety-degree turn under the railroad tracks, kind of by where the little crane is, and then does another ninety to go up the hill. While their equipment couldn't do ninety-degree turns, they didn't bring that equipment, didn't realize that they needed it. So we have them scheduled to come back out next Monday, I believe it is, to, with the right equipment to be able to do the turns to scope the last section of it. So once we get all of that information together, then hopefully we'll be able to determine what's going on there. But also we have, with the remaining money and with a couple hundred from the street fund, we bought some eighteen-inch culvert to replace some of the broken storm drain culverts around. It won't do everything, but it'll do some, and that's, that will be expending all the fifty-five hundred dollars that we have.
Sounds good.
And the black hole is a little lighter.
I heard they got, they went down from Main Street, that manhole there and went down towards the little crane, about thirty feet, and then they stopped.
That was a hundred and.
It was two hundred and thirty-two.
Two hundred and thirty-two.
Right to the railroad tracks, right where the crossing arm is, that's where it stopped. It just gets black and they can't see anything. So then they're gonna go from the other side and come up, see where, where it's blocked on the other side.
Light the railroad tracks.
Isn't that weird?
They're in water for eleven feet.
Yeah.
Man, we might not even have to fix it ourselves.
But the good news is, is the storm drain is not broken by the. But the good news is, is the storm drain is not broken by the post office, which is one thing that has been thought, is that all along there, that the storm drain has collapsed because the road's starting to dip there, but it's not. It's good, it's good right there. Clapped in some other places, but it's not, not collapsed there.
But you should be aware that with the recent rain events we've had, obviously rainwater is entering the system because the lagoons are as swollen as they can get. So water is coming in somewhere and I have a feeling it's got something to do with what's at the end of that pipe on this side of the railroad track. So it's just evidence.
Which John did say that he, instead of the water going out that way, he rerouted the water to go out one of the other two ways that water leaves the town. So there's not as much water going to be going down that, that way as of now.
Well, 506 is safe because all the water's in my yard. Okay, good.
Stop at the finish.
Can I go mudding? Can I go mudding?
Oh, no.
What, you got, what, you're like, coy?
All right, well, then with that, your report, let's announce, proceed to item number six, which is the executive session, the last item on our agenda. And so I'm going to officially declare this council meeting temporarily adjourned as we recuse ourselves to the executive session to discuss with our legal counsel, Jennifer Robertson, the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions and/or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation as pertains to RCW 42.30.1101I.
And as she said, to mention that the council will not be reconvening after the executive session, so.
Will be noted and we will, and we will be out in, at this moment in time, we estimate 30 minutes.
We don't, no, we don't have to give a time because the meeting, you just tell everyone that the meeting is going to be adjourned as soon as the executive session is over, that we will not be coming back to have action tonight.
Thank you for clarifying.
So that's it.
Okay, then with that, we will proceed to the council.